To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
The exits are, there's one exit right back here, and there's an exit just behind you on the door, there's the doors there in case of an emergency. Okay, so, first item on the agenda is Semana Estates, residential subdivision. We have a public hearing tonight. First, do you want to say anything, Dan?
Yeah, so, the mailings and the affidavit of the publication are all in order, so it's been duly noticed.
Okay, great. Mike, can you just give us a brief overview of the project?
Sure, for the people here, I know there's a few people from the public, so. I'm Mike Lefton, I'm left and associate on the engineering project. Semana Estates is located at the southeast corner of Beekman Road and Greenhaven Road. What's being proposed is a five lot subdivision. Two of the lots will have access directly off of Greenhaven with the balance of the three coming in off of Beekman. Greenhaven two, Beekman three, access points. The parcels we serve with individual wells and individual on-site septic systems. And we've already started the process in terms of getting soil tests done up to kind of confirm our fact that we're going to be able to get, you know, those lots on that property. So, long and short, that's a kind of a quick general synopsis and...
Okay.
Yeah, I got a question here.
Sure, sure.
You have any idea what Charbel's activity is at this point?
No.
Because if they do that development, you'd be able to tie in with both water and sewer.
I hear ya. I think Dan would probably be, if there was something going on, he would know, correspond to the town or anything, so, right now we're not in any established districts, so we're going with all the septic.
Yeah, there's been a little bit of activity on that one lately, but in general, what the activity is, is that they're in discussions with East Fishkill to actually send the sewage up to East Fishkill instead of building their own sewer treatment plant.
Uh-huh.
And also getting water from East Fishkill, so, I don't know where that's been, it's been probably about a year since I heard from them on that, but there were some discussions, so. There's always a possibility that that one will get going again at some point, but I'm not sure when that's gonna happen.
Thanks, Dan.
Yep.
Jason, did you have anything before we look towards the open, all right. And more, I'd like to have more discussion, you know, once we, after the comment, after the public has spoken, but I think now would be the appropriate time to open a public hearing.
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all approved?
Aye.
Yeah, how am I supposed to say?
We're wishing to open the public hearing.
Did that, and then all in favor?
All in favor, that's what I'm looking for.
Aye.
Aye.
That's three zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, the project is now open to the public for discussion, is there any person from the, from the public would like to get up and speak on this project? Just raise your hand. Mr. Kane, please go to the podium. You know the drill, mention your name. He's gonna say his address, too?
Yeah.
Yep.
Bill Crane, 254 Gardner Hollow Road. As I recall, there was an option around the turnaround, the option, one option would have saved trees if the turnaround is put in a different spot. Is that, is my memory correct on that?
We'll have to refer that to the engineer. Do you recall what he's talking about with the turnaround?
Just wanted to make sure, Mike asked me, so, at the last meeting we're meeting, there was some concerns relative to the location of the fire, whereas, so, they have to be within 25 feet, remember, of the site. What we did is we incorporated those over 25 feet off of the houses, and in fact, a portion of those areas are now where driveways were proposed anyway, so, I guess in fact, yeah, most trees will be removed.
Yeah, he's minimizing the impact of that emergency area by locating it on the actual driveway, so, you're gonna be impacted by the driveway in and of itself, you won't be doubly impacted by having an emergency turnaround off, significantly off the driveway, so.
Okay, so, I appreciate that, wherever it needs to be saved.
Right, absolutely.
Help us.
Great. Thanks, Bill. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this project? First person up front here, sorry, go ahead, and then we'll get you afterwards.
Mike Heaslip, 900 Beekman Road, my family just recently...
I'm sorry, your name again?
Mike Heaslip.
Heaslip, Mike Heaslip.
From 900 Beekman Road, but had just purchased a lot right across from Greenhaven Road on the opposite side of One West. I talked to Mike just briefly before, just wanted to make sure where we've got approval, with our house and the septic, everything that's been meshed off, that we go to build, we're not gonna have any issues, because our septic has right now been, border health approved to be kinda on that corner of Beekman and Greenhaven intersection on the side that, you know, approach to Semana Estates where this development's gonna go, these houses are gonna be, I'm just, you know, I wanted to make sure that was taken into consideration.
So, you're on the southwest side of the intersection?
Correct.
Okay. All right, do you have any other comments? We'll address that.
Um, no, my concern is that, this pipe that was there, I heard you guys talking about last meeting, it went out, and I just wanted to make sure that wasn't, nothing else came about from that.
Okay.
Because that, yeah, he has an on-plan showing that it does run into the lot that we just bought.
Okay, right, we'll discuss that as well. Typically, we like to get all the comments in, and then, unless it's a quick answer, we, then we'll, but I'll bring it up as soon as all the, everyone's had a chance to speak. Okay, the fellow in the back?
Good evening, Jared Jacob, 958 Beekman Road. I am the lot directly adjacent to, I am the only residential lot bordering it. I know that the fire department owns the lot on the backside. My concern is, perhaps selfishly, I've lived on Beekman Road for 40 something years, I've kind of take, grown accustomed to having a bit of privacy, and I know that I have nothing I can do about themselves in building a home. Is there any way that I can ensure there will be some sort of buffer between a yard just running right up into, is there anything at all to kind of protect the bucolic nature of what Beekman always had there? I don't know if there's anything that can be done or wouldn't be done.
Okay. That's something we've been discussing, you know, it has a lot to do with the removal of trees, and that's something we've been discussing, so, I've noted that down, and we'll, we'll discuss it once I get everybody's input. Do you have, do you have any other comments you want to make?
My only other concern is what would take place with the fire district property. They have been talking for years about building an entire training center there, a firehouse, and what impact would that have with houses there, and how would the two work together as a training center? Now, that would be a residential area there, I don't know how a fire training center would fit with that there, that would...
Rob?
That was gonna, that's gonna be a conflict of interest for...
As the fire commissioner, let me address that for you. Right now, currently, there is no action being taken on any development on that property. The district is looking into and giving serious consideration to expanding where we are currently located on Beekman Polkway Road, and as a result, and as a result of that, there has also been no discussion about doing anything from a training center point of view in the foreseeable future.
Good. Thank you.
Protect yourself, plant some green trees at the back.
Yeah, or do it sooner than later.
Right.
And I also had one other thing. If this all goes through, I had considered, I have roughly four acres, I had considered possibly subdividing itself and, you know, putting a second house there, and, you know, maybe going to another part of town where it's a little less congested. Would this impact my ability to do something like that in the future?
Okay, I've noted that down, we'll discuss that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this project?
I'll move to close.
Well, now, before we close, I just want to, let's start, I just want to discuss some of these issues here. So, the first issue by the gentleman up front was regarding, he's, his lot is already under the process of getting approval, and you've already received approval?
Yes.
From the, from the health department?
Yes.
So, he has approval from the health department for well and septic, and he'd like to know what the impact of this project will be on his approval, and if there'll be an impact to his project.
So, as part of this process, he got his health department approval, we also have to get our health department approval, knowing that I knew the lot across the way was actually bought and was going through that process. I have a copy of that approved map in my file, so the next iteration with the health department will show his well system, will show his septic system. It appears that we're okay in terms of separation distances, but, you know, if we have to jiggle some things around, we will, but that's all part of it. He's gotta be, he's, he's close enough where we have to make sure that we're not impacting him and he's not impacting the rest of it. But I do have a copy of the approved map in my file.
Dan, or do we want Michael to show this on the, on the drawing of separation distance?
It should be, it should be on there, yeah.
I made a note that I could show the septic, the well, and the potential house location.
It's any septic and well, I think our code calls for within 250 feet, so.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get it on there.
Hey, Rob?
Yes.
I guess I'll get our talk to you. Want to make a comment now?
Is it regarding this one issue, or?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I gotta, Dan, it's probably you. Did you get my answer back on, from your email regarding?
The timber.
The timber. You under, you're clear on?
Yeah, I forwarded the law to him.
Okay, the new one, not the old one now?
No, the, the new one.
You gotta write this time, okay? Okay, all right.
Well, it wasn't on the E-code, so that was the problem.
He's, Mike has got that, and, yeah, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it yet, but it has a section in there that says there's, there's requirements for not taking trees down any further distances from various things like septic's housing and stuff like that. Also, that's subject to change by the planning board if they see fit, but I don't know if you had a chance to look at it yet.
I hadn't, because it was part of Dan's last review letter, so, I went searching for it, and I didn't find it, so in my response letter indicated, where can I find it? He provided me the last one.
Yeah, and in case you can't, it's, it is on the town website, under laws, of course you will, you'll see it there.
Okay, I think, I think we're good.
If you need a copy.
I sent it to you.
Okay, you two are the same.
Yeah, I sent it to him, yeah.
The second issue, where you, you and I discussed a few weeks back, that I haven't walked that property, so I can't speak to firsthand knowledge, where you mentioned something about a pipe running, I don't know, under the road, it would probably run into his property now. I don't, what's the latest on that?
I would, I would like to discuss that, Cliff, we're gonna discuss that, but I wanna just address their comments first.
Yeah, okay, okay, I just didn't want that skipped over.
We're not gonna let that, right, okay, we'll discuss that. So, the second item that one of the fellow in the back brought up is, his property is adjacent to the subdivision, he's concerned about privacy, he's wondering what measures are being taken to ensure a buffer between his property and the new housing lot that's going up next to his property. So, I can tell you that we've been meeting on this subdivision for several meetings now, and we've been requesting they limit the amount of tree removals to only what's absolutely necessary, you know, to construct these parcels, and that includes trying to maintain the wooded areas along the edges of the parcels. Am I misrepresenting this in any way? We've been talking about that at past meetings. So, maybe you can demonstrate on the drawing what's being left adjacent to his parcel?
So, we have, we have three locations, as part of this proposal, we locate all the trees, very, 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 very,[1066.12]
For the majority of the subdivisions and as you can see, I mean, there's just a rectangle on there representing a house. Who knows what kind of house they're going to put, what size it is. So is the location of the house relative to that? So Mike, if you can just add some of those tree notes based on the law, reference the law right on the plat so that everybody's aware of the law and what the limits of the tree clearings are from structures for when the plot plans come in, then they can at least, you know, identify those trees at that point.
Okay.
Let me add one more thing. Most of those trees there being able or able to handle, anybody who knows trees knows that most of the foliage is up top and there's trunks at the bottom. So keeping them there, well, it's nice, doesn't do much unless, you know, it's big vineyard. Is it possible to have shrubbery putting as a privacy screen?
Right.
Or something like that?
That's, I mean, we can, as a board, we're overseeing the subdivision as it's developing and we can propose to the applicant to do some landscape buffering. That's something we can request.
You know, what I could do is I want to keep, kind of keep that open ended after I talk to the owner and applicant because I've been involved in that too because in theory, which way, put a couple pines in, stagger a little bit, provide some buffering. But when you have all the foliage up top and you don't get the sun, what happens to the back? So you really can get anything out of it. So I'll have that discussion and see if there's something, you know. And the other thing I was thinking, maybe I can reach out by giving my number, kind of walk it, kind of see what's going on and maybe figure out the best option based upon what we're working with.
And if you have a digital copy of the map, is it possible to get a copy of that file actually to do it?
How do we make that accessible to them? That's, is it accessible online or you come down to the town, right, and you can look at?
You can come down to the town and get some foil, right?
Yeah, you have to go through a foil process, which is a very easy one-page form.
You have to come into the town and meet with their town clerk?
Yeah, you can say all the time.
Yeah.
You can actually review the file right then and there or whatever. So, yeah.
I missed you. Are you ready for that?
I am, yeah.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
It's the only residential property.
Thank you. Before we continue our internal discussion, I don't want to say internal, but the planning board's discussion, is there any of the comments from the public at this point? Okay. Dan, are we ready to close? Is the application completed sufficient enough that we can not expect major changes to the project that would require us to, you know, have public input on? Or you think, I guess what I'm getting at is, do we need to keep the public hearing open or can we?
Yeah, so New York State town law would require that within 62 days of closing the public hearing, we'd have to make a decision on preliminary. There's a number of items that are out there still with regard to 130-20, which is our requirements for preliminary. So there's two routes you can do. You can ask the applicant to waive the 62-day process and then you could consider closing the public hearing. There may be some changes. Once we start talking about the drainage issue, that's really the biggest issue I have is the drainage on the site right now. Will it change the subdivision layout substantively? I can't say that for sure. I don't think it will change it very much, but there'll have to be some accommodations to be able to, you know, basically garner my approval of that. So.
Right, right. Is that something you'd be interested in doing is waiving your?
Yeah, that's pretty typical for other town boards. And again, I think the board is of the mindset, we were very clear about that last time, don't want to see a public hearing going on and on and on. And I think in this manner, if we provide that waiver, that way it keeps you, doesn't push you back into against a wall and allows for us to kind of continue doing what we got to do, get the plans to satisfy Dan and then move forward with, you know, some kind of approval.
How do they, logistically, how do they technically waive it? They send you a letter?
No, it's on the record.
On the record.
You're just waiving it, you just waive it right now. All right, all right. Does anybody else feel like we need to adjourn the meeting, the public hearing to continue it to the next meeting or do we think we're ready to close?
I think we're ready to close it. Very limited input.
All right, so, all right, one more comment, yeah?
Yeah, I wanted to address the pipe.
We're going to, we're still going to discuss the project and I just need to be able to either adjourn or close the public hearing and so we can continue our discussion. And so do I have a motion to, well, first, Mr. Chairman?
Why don't you ask the applicant to answer those particular questions if you can during the public hearing and then close it if the board so chooses.
You mean for the pipeline we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, all right. Let's just keep discussing it. So did you get any further on, we've had discussions on the two pipes, there's two culvert pipes, one that are, one on Greenhaven Road and one on Beekman Road. And I know that there was some question as to where they were located on the, on the, on the map. I know you had schematically located it on the map. Did you get any, did you have the surveyor survey the locations of those pipes? Do we know more about them?
So at the time of the submission, we didn't have that exact location, but now we have that exact location. So, you know, that'll be on the next iteration. I mean, we're not really too far off from where we actually figured it would be, but we have some in birds and stuff like that. Yeah, I, you know, we submitted our application or letter of request to the county DPW relative to the driveway locations, okay? Basically, the conceptual approval from them to some point to, you know, to you so we can move forward with the process. These are county pipes. I mean, and I'm not, you know, I don't think me or the applicant is trying to fight city hall on this. They're there, they're there for a reason. I get it. But I guess the question would be is, they're currently owned and maintained by DPW. We'll agree on that, right? So they discharge onto private property, private property, right? There doesn't seem to be any, you know, there's no wetlands on the property. It's not creating a wetland area. There's really kind of a widely defined, I mean, when I say wide, I mean, you know, 30, 40, 50 foot wide where this kind of runs down and makes its way from Beekman Road down to Greenhaven. So is it something where, you know, we offer the county an easement to allow them to maintain the discharges on that property? I don't think the town would be interested in something like this, right? And it has nothing to do with the town. So if I resolve this issue specifically with the county, are we going to be okay with this? I mean, I'd rather not go out and start doing wild drainage studies and things like this on county pipes.
Well, you know, I did some research on it just to, just to understand what's going on there, you know, and there's over 130 acres that drain to that culvert pipe, which is a lot, you know. And so, and the culvert pipe that goes under Greenhaven is like an eight-inch CMP.
Right.
It's a straw. I mean, there's nothing there of substance. So, you know, what happens is, is the water sits in that low area where you have two driveways. So we need to be able to make sure that when you're gone and the developer's gone, that a resident owns that house and now their driveway is consistently getting flooded out or underwater, not passable.
Are they going to here or here?
Down, down there.
Oh, well, I think you guys are aware it was on the deck, but I don't know.
So, you know, and what we don't control is that, you know, if the county at some point, you know, let's say that the culvert on Beekman Road is maybe a little too high and so water sitting on the north side of Beekman Road, ponding there, whatever else, not really getting over here as much. When the county comes in at some point, they may say, well, you know, oh, we got to fix this pipe because that neighbor or that adjacent property owner says, I want to develop my property. You guys have made my property all wet, you know, and now they lower the pipe and now that water is making its way through. So we just got to be able to, you know, identify that and account for it for the future. So that's my concern. You know, I can tell you that there's a number of old subdivisions here and lots that were built, whether it was poor design, poor construction or a mixture of both, or a complete headache for the town and the residents expect the town to fix it. So we're trying to avoid the problem before it happens. And that's all. We're just, you know, it's been, it's been a big problem.
Yeah, I get your concerns. When that water hits the residents, the residents bitch, they bitch this out.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, and you get, whatever it may be. So I get that. But again, I just want to make sure I'm resolving it, just to keep everybody happy. The county, by friend, doesn't seem to have a whole lot of concern about it. But again, the situation's changing, we have residents and so forth. So it may take a sit down with me and you and one of the higher ups over there. I mean, it's just, you know.
Yeah, I don't know if it's as much about them, about as, as much about showing what's there now, how, how it actually reacts and what's going to happen in the future if one or the other changes, you know. I mean, what would be helpful for your lot was if the Greenhaven Road pipe was actually larger and lower, you know, because right now there's a bowl there and the pipe is up high and it's small.
Where's your going to discharge?
But it discharges across. So I don't believe, it doesn't go to Mr. Hayslip's lot. It actually goes to, there's a 20-foot by 20-foot drainage easement on Charbel where the pipe actually discharges, as shown on the filed map. I don't know where it goes from there. I think it actually would probably go southwest towards Fishkill Creek from there. And I don't know if Charbel's plans had accounted for that water coming through or not, but, and again, there's also some other discrepancies which are, I found to be very odd, really. I mean, there's, there's mapping that shows this is a Class C stream. So there's mapping that shows it's an intermittent stream, still with a Class C classification. And then there's some mapping that shows that there's a possibility that some of this water was diverted over and through a ridge and then, and westerly of the site. So, you know, at the end of the day, some of, some of this can be looked at, you know, we can go up onto that other property. Maybe some of that water's not making it down right now because it was temporarily dammed up. I don't know if there's a beaver up there. I don't know. You know, and then if that ever lets loose, where's all that water going? You know, so it's just, it's just a concern that we need to be able to, to address. We can't anecdotally say, you know, it doesn't look like there's a lot of water there and then have to deal with it later. So.
I could see, I could see what the county is doing is they're saying, look, right now we're not that concerned with it. But in the event of one day they go to reconstruct the road and they look at the drainage on the road and they determine that that pipe isn't functioning as a culvert, the way it's supposed to function, and they go in and they put in a bigger culvert, then that landowner is up for a surprise. All of a sudden, water that wasn't getting to them on certain level storms is now getting to them.
But I, and I understand that. And naturally, it's called town. But the town really should be taking the obligation for county changing conditions out there. It's really county issue.
Right.
You know what I mean? I don't think the town should be taking the obligation of the county if county changes.
I agree, but guess what?
Well, let me ask you this. And I'm just, I'm just, I'm just throwing this up. If there were, if there was an easement between that pipe and the pipe on Greenhaven Road, the landowner would know, would know upfront that there's going to be water coming through here. I may not see it today. I may not see it in certain storm events, but I have to expect the fact that there's going to be water coming through here. Then they wouldn't come to us. They wouldn't, they, they could come to us. Nothing stops people from coming to us. But we, we can then say, look, there's an easement on your property that allows water to pass through it. You know, I'm just, I'm advancing that discussion way too far and I'm not saying we need to go there, but I'm just, we are trying to preempt the possible, you know, you know, problems that residents may have in the future. And I think the county may be a little, they may not be thinking of, they're not thinking down the line. I get it. They have a lot of the issues they're working on. But maybe you can bring that concern up to them?
Yeah, no, I tried to actually make a couple.
Are you ever going to lower this pipe? Are you going to keep it the same? Are you ever going to potentially increase runoff into this parcel? We would like to address that now if that's the possibility. Yes, sir.
I might need to give you a little insight, given that I see it every day. There is a culvert that put in a few years ago across Beekman Road right down here, right? It goes into a trench that runs along Beekman Road, running across from my house. There's a culvert on my driveway. That culvert goes into a trench and then runs down here. It just kind of swells off into here and the water, all the water from Beekman Road flows through here on the reggae. If you're in a storm, it flows through, it's a seasonal intermittent stream. In the summer, it's dry, it's not flowing, but usually it's got a small trickle through it. If you're in a storm, it comes through pretty fierce and it washes out the valley that goes up to here and then disperses in there. If you walk over there, you'll see it's all silt and sediment and roach. And it flows, I've had to walk the property plenty of times, kind of see the map there, what's going on. It flows, you can see where the leaves have been disturbed and it flows all the way through. And it puddles up somewhere around here, I'd say, and it disperses over time. But there, that's the county's, that's the county just has it. It just handles.
All right. Thank you very much. That's good information.
And it flows pretty decent.
Yeah. I don't know.
So the county could control that by continuing the culvert?
It could flow all the way down.
Right.
They'd have to construct a swell.
As opposed to just flowing in here.
Right.
Yeah.
Which would resolve all the problems.
All right.
Fire, fire beware.
I want to ask, are you aware of that condition? Is that something that?
No, I mean, we've been on site a few times with soil testing and things like that. And I'm not going to say that, but I haven't seen that kind of condition up there.
All right.
Fire, for example. Yeah, we've had some pretty heavy storms like it too.
Yeah.
I'll come this out and we have to discuss with the county.
I have in the back of my mind that I've seen it wet when I've driven by.
All right. Well, I think we need to investigate that drainage issue because we don't want to have a drainage problem on these parcels, right? I mean, for the, to the benefit of your own, the owner of the lot, of the parcel and the potential owners of those lots, we want to make sure that there's not a drainage concern.
If you go out Beekman Road, you see the valley and then it just kind of slabs out and flows in there.
Is there a remedy for that? Like, can you include in your, in the plan to do some drainage swell work along the edge of the road? That's something that, yeah.
Oh, I mean, I don't know the exact condition out there, but I mean, typically there's piping or there's some kind of swell, you know, takes the water from the baby. So I have to go out there and take a look at it. It's been going down.
Yeah.
I have to set precise specifics.
All right. Would you be against meeting with Mike and the county DPW?
Yeah, we could do, we could do it that way. Again, I'm not sure what the county's going to say other than, you know, you can't obstruct our pipe and we are still allowed to drain on that property if we want to. You know, I think that that's probably going to be their response. So, you know, it always ends up.
But, but at least we can mention to the county that in the event that you ever increase the, the pipe size and there's a problem with our residents, we're going to defer that right back to you. That's a condition that they create and that's, and if we want to remedy the potential for that now, I mean, there's a time to do it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the headache still becomes ours for a while, no matter what, you know, but, and, you know, Craig and I do an awful lot of dealing with stuff like that.
Right.
Haven't there been a couple of lawsuits in reference to drainage going onto somebody's property? I'm thinking, Craig, I'm thinking specifically of Gardner-Hommel.
From the town perspective, I mean, as long as the town doesn't.
Right, where the town, where the town had put drainage in.
As long as the town doesn't divert the water onto private property or cause a condition that, that does so, you know, there are always issues of municipal responsibility, but I don't, I don't see that in this case with a county culvert that has already been in existence for years. Whether or not it has to be re-engineered, that would have to come from the county. And they, they would have to make that determination. But the town has no jurisdiction over the county to enforce that.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
But you guys are taking a hard look like you're supposed to about, you know, potential impacts down the road.
Jason, do you have anything you want to ask or add at this point? Because I'd like to, I'd like to move it, move forward now. You're going to go and look into the, this issue with runoff coming through the property and, as that fellow had mentioned. And in the meantime, I think for now, we'll, maybe we should just adjourn the meeting, the public hearing until the next meeting, till we get some more information.
You can close it, but if there's new information that comes to light, you can always reopen the public hearing.
Oh, all right, okay.
And he's already waived the 62 days.
All right. So you've already waived the 62 days. All right. So I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing at this point.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's three zero.
Okay. Is there anything else we'd like to discuss on this application at this moment?
I think the only thing I would mention is, you know, if we're going to do any kind of investigation onto it, Spiro Realty used to own this. I know they don't anymore, but they own the property on the north. So, I mean, just really understanding what's going on up on that property to understand where that water's going would be critical for understanding how much is actually getting onto here. So I don't know if there's contacts between the current owner that bought this from Spiro, if we can get some permissions to walk up on there and see what's going on.
No, we'll just take a walk.
What's that?
I don't, I don't just take a walk. I think, you know, he's up in the lobby.
I think that's called trespassing.
Is that it?
Do you, are you going to locate the wells and septics in the adjacent properties?
Yeah, no, I have all that in my notes. We're going to get those based upon the comments that we'll make here. We're going to get all those on the plan, field drainage issue of, you know, we may be back next month or maybe not, depending on, but we won't have a, you know, a public hearing.
Okay. And if I get a chance, I'll take, I'll take a ride out. I won't go on the property, but I'll look from the side because it seems to be a drainage issue on the side of the road.
Yeah, I mean, can the planning board members take a walk on the property?
Absolutely.
Okay, there you go.
Okay.
Just don't do it with more than two.
More than?
Or else you have a open space, a, a open meeting as law.
Oh, oh, right, yes. Okay, all right.
Just don't discuss in any matter of this application with anybody.
Yeah, okay. All right. All right. I think that's enough for tonight. Unless there's any other questions. Peter, you have anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Ask?
Nope.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Center of Youth Discussion. Okay, you want to give us a brief interview?
Brief update to the board. Last minute from the board, kind of a little bit of special layout. Again, just refresh, existing site, have an existing building on it. Just a park, a lot of septic, some lighting and some landscaping. Now they purchased the property, but they're rebuilding a tad that exists right now, just to complete that. It's a former building that's fired. I think the biggest thing was the town center, the front and setback pushes the building up fairly close to the front and setback, you know, front of the property line. So we asked input from the board if they liked the layout because we're going to retain the existing pad side, put it in the building. The board agreed that they liked that layout. So then we proceeded over to the ZDA board where we got a variance, a setback variance to keep the building where the existing pad is. So we're going to give that a update to the board. We did receive that approval from the ZDA. And now it's just kind of pivoting and getting more updated renderings. We had some schematic renderings of what the, what the buildings would look like. But now I'll kind of take it into a video here and provide some full color rendering and show the specific things on the side of the building up to the residential unit up top. Some of the other things we've been trying to get hold of is DOT, DOT, they've been sort of a tough battle there to get input from a conceptual standpoint. We'll continue to reach out to DOT. Again, we have an existing entrance, a standing reused entrance. I don't think there's going to be much hesitation there. I'm going to take this aside, just to retain that, that issue, that's for the back board, which of course on to that effect. The other thing too is working with the board health. Obviously, we have some tough soils in this part of the town center and actually, suppose we got a meeting next week with Dan Keeler of the health department to kind of run over our design, our, our closing and seeing what's, what's existing on site and if we'll have to make any improvements until, let's say, a replacement they're in, if we need to down the line. So it is in queue. It's just the way things kind of shake out there, deadlines and the ZDA meeting. Those are probably the two components we don't really have for the board right now. The rendering, the septic and renderings and a field goal from DOT and the board health. Other than that, we are working on some signage for the front. We have to move the sign back off the front property line slightly, but the applicant has the one thing of the sign on the detail. And I think the one question we didn't have is, I don't know if Dan can go up top and add, but we just have to just, it says the sign face is 50 square feet. I'm assuming that's 50 square feet left, 50 square feet.
I believe so, yeah.
That was the one question we had. We wanted to make sure we were in the right track.
Yeah.
And then, right, was it?
Right, yeah. Because on the sign currently, there's six by four, so one sign and then six by four. The bottom portion of the sign is there. So my question was, can I use all six by four, so I can back for the sign?
Yes, I believe you can. The, the section of the code is, it's in zoning, it's 155- dash, let's see, pull it up quick here, if you give me a second. 155-57. So it, it talks about the freestanding signs in there. It delineates colors, materials, sizes, and I think it talks about, you know, whether it's a back-to-back sign or whether it's kind of like a V sign and, and what the angles could be before, you know, before you can't angle it any further because then it's considered more square footage. So I think, I think you'll be okay, but just read through 155-57 and.
Works. I think the only thing to be a question on is we're, we're developing the renderings for submission for the next meeting. The applicant's color palette, it's like a, it's a, it's a black, black building and it's going to have like a white window trim, white columns in the center. As you're looking at the building, they kind of hold like that shed overhand for the walkway and then metal style roof. Looking into the town codes specific to colors, I didn't identify anything off the top of my head that restricted us to that color combination.
I think to use earth tones, right?
Is it earth tones?
There's, there's actually like a town center architectural design guideline book. I'll, I'll forward it over to you. Just maybe take a quick look at that once I get, I'll look it up right now and see if I can send it to you right now. But, you know, peruse that as you're going through the, the design and the rendering.
Yeah, that should provide you some guidance. Have you looked at that or?
We're just, we're kind of just getting into it now because we didn't want to take it so far unless we heard from ZDA because the whole, this whole thing works with the building's standing as.
Right.
Former footprint. So now that we're there, I'm trying to take a look at colors.
All right. Before I have our, our discussion, Dan, do you want to go over any of your comments with us?
Yeah, let's do that. Because this is an aquifer overlay, I think we just need to kind of get a better understanding about the operation and, and what happens with the things in there. So there was nail stations and hair stations and stuff like that and, and feet cleaning stations and stuff like that. So we don't know what type of chemicals might be going in there, what might be going into the septic, which is potential impacts to the aquifer. So just kind of, if you can, it doesn't have to be right now, but maybe with the next submittal, if you can put together a narrative on, on exactly what's going in, how that impacts it, or, or if you have a different method of disposal of anything that might be hazardous or bad for the aquifer, that would be great to, to include so that the board can consider that when they go through the, the standards for the aquifer overlay. You know, that, that would be the one concern. You know, that would be the one concern is with this use, I mean, you know, I don't know. The Beadman Plaza, just a few down from there, used to have a nail place, and there was a Chinese food place in there as well. And between the grease from them and all the gunk from the nail place, that septic system got ruined and then they had to pump up to Dalton Farm, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, you do. So that, it's just a concern because we don't know exactly what's going on there. So if you can just provide us with that information, then the board can make an educated decision on that. You already talked about DOT and Health Department, I think that's important to know before we're going. Let's see, elevations forthcoming, you already mentioned that. Just kind of mention about the easement, just for flexibility and future design, you know, instead of maybe having an eight-foot easement for the sidewalk and then the other easement for utility, maybe just make it a combined sidewalk and utility easement. And then that way, there could be flexibility in where the neighbors end up putting a sidewalk in the future, where water or sewer line might end up going in the future. There was a planning board discussion item that we've already kind of started talking about that before, which was the refuse enclosures under the stairs, and the planning board had generally agreed with that. We just mentioned about how long they were going to sit there, and I think it was Fay that mentioned it, she was not here tonight, but she had a concern about how long it was going to stay out there. So the applicant has suggested that within 24 hours after garbage pickup, that those will be moved back under the stairs. I just wanted to make sure that the board kind of gave a little authorization on that and then it can come off my letter or if you want it less or more.
It sounds fine to me.
Is there consensus on that?
I have no issue with that.
24 hours?
Click that off your list.
Okay. So the ARB is also charged with looking at the lighting, so they have some lighting on there. I had one comment about the lighting, I don't know if that's really, I think it's kind of a negligible spill over the property line, but we don't want to have an issue with a neighbor. So if you can just look if, see if there's a better cutoff on the shield on the backside of that, maybe we can prevent that spill. But as the planning board is looking at the renderings and the sign, they can look at the lighting then, I think that would be appropriate for them to look at that all at the same time. Landscaping, so there's some landscaping shown. I think it would be good if the planning board actually gave some guidance on the landscaping now, so they could start incorporating any changes you might have or say you like it.
There's not a planting plan in here, you just got it, it's the first page?
It's on the first sheet, there's a landscaping legend, legend bottom left, right, and then there's locations or, he's got the bigger plan there.
Yeah.
If it'll make it easier.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Brian, can you bring that up? That'd be great. Thank you.
I just passed the light check, you know, and they got to redo this for planning board.
Thank you, Brian. Some plantets here, street trees, they put street trees in. I like the palette, it's good, the, it's native plant palette, which is good. Are you maintaining the wooded area on the edge of the parcel? Looks like you're maintaining the, you're not taking down any trees?
I don't know.
Yeah. All right, no, I don't, I don't take any exception to this. You know, they're trying to, they're attempting to limit the amount of disturbance in this proposal.
Yeah, so, you know, in terms of compliance with the landscaping for Town Center, we normally would be looking for street trees. They've shown a number of trees along 55. You know, it would be unfortunate if that sidewalk and utility easement had been constructed later and affects that, but there's, because they're shown within that easement, but it meets the current streetscape, landscape standards that we have. And then there's a number of landscaping features that are along the parking area to help soften the parking area, which is also important to the extent that Town Center calls for the parking to be the rear of the building. But since we're using the existing slab here, parking has always been in the front here, the septic's in the back. So it obviously, whatever we can do to soften the look of that.
I mean, white pines are typically not street trees. People go on typically, these are more for buffers.
Yeah.
I happen to like them a lot, so I don't have a big problem with it, but I don't know, what do you think? You think we should have them do?
There's like five eastern white pines showing on here.
Like red maple or oak, it's a street tree, you want to use a large, uh...
Personally, I'd like, I'd like the oak or something like that myself.
You like the oak?
Oak, yeah. I don't know, I don't know whether they're still there, but at the Plaza, they had white pines at one point.
Yeah, Beadman Plaza?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they're still there.
And that's right next to here, right? Or it's close to you?
That's two, two doors down, maybe?
All right. Yeah, I mean, to me, it actually buffers the parking a lot better than like a large deciduous tree.
Well, they end up getting trimmed up, but when they're, when they're smaller, it acts as a buffer.
Not necessarily, you don't have to, yeah, you don't have to.
Well, they're minimum three inch diameter at four foot, which I think that meets our Town Center code for street trees or some, I believe.
Yeah.
The idea is to have it as a buffer?
It's a mixture, you know, it's to soften, soften the look and provide a streetscape feel.
Rob, so instead of white pine, how about something such as an arborvitae, which retains its lower foliage? You know, the white pine, they get leggy after a while and they end up getting trimmed and it's just like at the Plaza, there's nothing, if I'm correct, there's nothing at this point that obstructs your line of sight.
Aren't the arborvitae, aren't they eaten by the deer? Aren't they eaten by deer?
The arborvitae?
Yeah.
They are susceptible to deer.
They are.
There's certain types, green mountains, don't, green mountain, or green... But, I mean, to answer your question, he's showing in a location as a street tree, so actually, if there is a sidewalk that eventually goes under it, you will want to limit up so that it's not interfering with the, you want it to behave like a street tree.
Well, unless, unless initially set the trees back far enough out of the easement.
I, again, I really prefer the look of it, if they don't ever trim it and it gets leggy and it gets more, it always, to me, has a very natural form of a look. If it's in vicinity of a sidewalk, then they're going to have to, you know, prune the lower branches just so they don't interfere with the, so there's clearance on the sidewalk.
Or if we put a traditional leaf tree in.
But you can, yeah, I mean, I think the intent of the law was to have an ally of street trees, and this isn't a, this isn't what I wouldn't, I wouldn't call this a traditional street tree. It would be a unique approach and it would be consistent with the Plaza up front, and so I don't have a problem with that. So I, I can go either way, either you keep the white pines and then, or you, or we propose like a red maple or, you know, a red oak or oak trees or something.
Crab apples or...
I mean, yeah, they qualify, but they're small deciduous tree. You try, I think the key to keeping spirit of law is to try to emulate what you're doing on the other, what the other properties have. So if there is this, if we're starting to do, you know, a bunch of white pines over here and over there, then you'd want to sort of continue that look, although, you know, you do want diversity too, because if we ever get a disease and then it kills all the white pines all at once, then you got nothing, so.
I mean, Brian, discussion after a couple of drive bys with the idea of what would be good for street trees.
We don't have to decide it tonight, with, yeah.
Then it has to be decided now.
I just thought it'd be good if we can give them some guidance. I think that they kind of get the flavor of where you're at, it's, maybe they can put a little variety in there and make you all happy.
Yeah.
That's impossible.
But we like that you're, the intent, which is to landscape the, you know, the property to buffer the parking, and so that's all good stuff. All right, so is there anything else you wanted to talk about, Dan?
No, I think the rest of it is all pretty self-explanatory, it's a pretty thorough submittal. And so, so at this point, I would mention that the planning department had circulated for lead agency as authorized by this board previously, and after the 30-day period, we only had received notification from the Dutchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, who did not object to the planning board acting as lead agency. So the planning board could declare itself lead agency for this unlisted action at this point.
All right, yeah, let's be the lead, let's take the lead on this. I'll make a motion to declare lead agency. Any seconds?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If that passes, three zero. And, you know, maybe just get a little bit more from DOT Health Department, address some of these comments, those elevations, and then that way we can send it off to the Dutchess County Department of Planning. It's part of the process for the public hearing is also having their comments from the 239 referral, so.
Yeah, I'd like to reiterate the importance of getting, to try to get more detail, get more down the road on with the Health Department in particular. We tend to move all these projects through and have very little interaction with the Health Department, and that could have significant changes on the design. So in order for us to feel comfortable with moving the project, we need to know that, you know, you're heading in the right direction with the Health Department, that they're comfortable, so. Great, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, so the next one is Town Center Grove.
None of us can read.
I mean, I'm dying, I'm trying, I'm usually pretty good.
You ready to read this?
No, I can't, because the way, the way my eyes are, I can't see anything, I'm so badly, earsight.
So Town Center Grove is located, actually, I think everybody was here for the Sparrow's Nest project. If you head up, take a right on Town B Drive, Town Center Boulevard, you pass Sparrow's Nest on the right-hand side, and this is the property, you know, the next property on the right-hand side. Before the board a couple of times, what we're proposing is a subdivision and site plans, two, two new buildings, all the families, these are the latest elevations that we've come up with. Each of them will have four units, a total of eight units on the property. We've gone ahead and started, as you mentioned, maybe on the previous application, I do want to know it, because the soil's not so hot out there, to be honest with you, so we've started that, worked with the Health Department, just getting our soil testing done and getting it to the point that we're just getting those particular designs. I do have a comment letter from Mr. Kohler, cleared for the 18th. I think the last time we were here, which was not last month, maybe the month before, we circulated the board on, circulated lead agency, so I know that's got to be kind of taken care of at this point. We certainly looking for a sketch for subdivision and site plan, and then obviously moving forward with public hearings and things such as that, so. That's just a quick synopsis of where we are and what the application proposes.
Can you remind me, did this require any variances?
So the CC zones, they require, they allow them front here, is that this is between zero and 15 feet, so what they like to have is the building either on the property line or 15 feet off. Based upon fact, we had a liking discussion with the library across the way, so what the parking is in the front, but because regardless, the parking is in the front. So in order to keep with that, you know, kind of befitting with the area around it, we're showing that parking in the front. So we have done it for the zoning board, it was, you know, they had no issue with what the proposal accounted for. Because for the same reason that the applicant just kind of emulated, we may have to go back there for one time. I think secret-wise, we got to get lead agency squared away, right? And then we got to start pushing around to those other agencies to kind of secure those other okay's. So there's been a lot of due diligence and going back and forth with the other boards, just everybody, you know, everybody's aware of the project, you know?
That was the only variance?
I think that was it.
The, the amount of units, the fact that it's a multi-unit house, that's all permitted and that's all, all right.
Yeah, yeah, so I think, I think the variance would end up being, you know, the parking in the front, which is against Town Center design principles and the front yard setback.
Right.
Sparrow's Nest was a charitable facility, which our code actually requires a setback 100 feet. So there was a contradiction between the fact that that's in the Town Center zone where they want the buildings up front versus this charitable facility that has to be set back by code also. So in putting together that plan, the board gave them some, Michael S. P. some guidance here, and, and he's gone ahead and set back the buildings a bit to provide consistency that was looked for by the planning board at the time.
Yeah, I, we don't have to, I mean, unless you guys want to talk about it, I remember that discussion, we already, we went over it, so I don't need to go over that part of it anymore. The parking's going in the front, that's what we decided at the previous meetings and I don't see any reason to change that. Dan, do you want to go through your comments or should we just start discussing this?
Uh, yeah, I can do that. They're, they're in the process and they've acknowledged a number of things that they're still getting some survey on, so. I don't know if you can give us a quick update on where you are with that additional survey, Mike?
Yeah, I have, can't say that the work has been done, I know it's been scheduled, but the next time we walk in here with that.
The building inspector, this is part of the FAB comment, number three on general comments, did say that this is group R2, which is going to require those sprinklers, so we just need to know where any water storage would be, where emergency power would be for that, where the FDC connection would be, so that the fire department can look at that and make sure that that's an appropriate location for them. FAB also talked about a collapse zone on this. They thought that they would pull into this site to fight any kind of a fire here, and that in concert with comment 16, which talks about a requirement where the parking cannot be located any closer than 25 feet to the front of the building for, that's 155-36.2 B2. That's a multifamily, there's a, there's a special section of our code just about specific... specifically about multifamily.
Right.
So it says the parking shall be located no closer than 25 feet to the front of the building, so between that and, and that, and the fire advisory board comment, that might end up having to, you know, result in some sort of a, a new look at the, at the layout to that extent, to provide both of those. You can either try to work with the FAB, and then add that to the list of the variances for the 155-36.2 issue, or you can try to address it and meet that section of the code and meet the FAB, so. I don't know if there's a way to maybe transfer some of that parking a little further away or whatever, but that's, that's something that'll have to be considered or dealt with in, in the variance process, you know?
Does the FAB have a monthly meeting?
Yes.
Do they allow, like, sometimes allow us to come in?
Yeah, I think that that would be, I think that that would be welcomed, right? Pete, do you, do you think that that would be?
Yeah.
That's how it used to be back a long time ago, actually.
Yeah, I went before once.
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Pete, you got ahold of you for that, or?
It's the second Thursday, right? Second Thursday is 9:00 AM?
Mike, it's the second Thursday of the month, meeting at 9 o'clock PM?
AM.
AM.
At the firehouse. Because that, that throws some, you know, monkey wrench in, and then that might actually necessitate that the building would have to be set back even further, and then we have to get into the septic design and making sure that you have room for a primary septic system, a reserve septic system, separations, public water supply wells, all that, all that jazz. We mentioned in here about the SWIP, so we just need to kind of advance stormwater design a bit. Obviously, we need to get that layout issue hammered out before you get into the strict design of grading and, and stormwater management. There's a front elevation that was shown, need to advance that to, you know, provide materials and colors, and maybe some of the other elevation sides, the rear elevations. Um, let's see, there's some more survey. The planning board shall review the landscaping, so.
The stormwater, uh-
Yeah.
Is this requiring post-construction stormwater practice?
It will be, yeah. Yeah, it requires a full SWIP. So there's, there's some landscaping shown right now. I'm not sure if the planning board wants to review any of that at this moment, or if you want to wait until there's, to determine if there's any layout changes, but they put a, you know, relatively robust section of landscaping between the sidewalk and the building, and quite a few street trees along Town Center Boulevard, and some other landscaping right at the entry to the site, so. Where's that table on this one, Mike? Yeah, bottom, bottom left. There's a tree planting and shrub planting schedule. If the planning board wants to review some of those species right now and give them any guidance, that'd be helpful to him, I'm sure. Otherwise, we can wait and see if there's changes to the layout.
You can read that?
I can, because I can read it and you can't. I'm just going to say I'm okay with it.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
You think, in the future, do you think you could submit things a little smaller?
He, he did, he did provide full-size plans and electronic as well, but, so there's red maples and sugar maples along Town Center Boulevard.
Red maples and sugar maples.
And there's junipers and zebra grasses and fountain grasses within the internal and around the entry.
Yeah, see, that's where-
That's a nice mix.
He's using, yeah, he's using a, he's using a diversity of trees, and they're large canopy, street trees, traditional. Red maples will have a really good shot at making it.
It's my favorite tree on the front lawn.
Nice fall color.
So generally, you're in favor of the species shown?
I am, I mean, the grasses and stuff, that's really just a personal, you know, thing. They're not, they're not necessarily native, but, you know, I'd like to see more native shrubs being used, that would be my comment.
Anybody else want to add?
I'm good with it as is.
Okay. Uh, lighting, so we'll need to put any lighting on there. I know you're saying there's some minimal lighting, but just anything that's going to be there, we'll need to know about, and kind of get some photometrics, make sure it's dark sky compliant, all that. Obviously, some of this is towards the end, but stormwater management, maintenance and easement agreements and all that will need to be included in there as well. In terms of process, the 30-day period has passed. The planning department did lead agency circulation. Again, on this one, it was only the Health Department that responded, and they did not object to the planning board acting as lead agency, so if the planning board wishes to, they could declare themselves lead agency for this unlisted action.
I don't see a problem declaring lead agency. I'll make a motion to declare lead agency. Should I? Good. Jason seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, that's three, zero. And this is a subdivision, a site plan, and a special use permit. So process there is granting sketch subdivision approval, if you think you're ready for that, it's just, just sketch subdivision approval.
I just want to ask a question about the septic. So you're saying that you haven't, the, you don't have the best soils there for septic, but are, have you started discussions with the Health Department on this?
Yeah, we popped a hole, but we haven't, we haven't done the design. Just inherently, we didn't work over that area, I knew we were going to see nice stuff out there myself. I mean, sure, well, it's just going to be a larger septic.
It just may end up being a larger septic, you say?
Larger septic, yes.
And can you just show us on the map? Is it all the way up in the left corner there?
We reserve these areas.
Oh, all right. What was that, what are those series of dash lines in the top left?
This is stormwater.
Oh, that's a stormwater.
That's surface stormwater.
Well, is this design requiring any removal of trees at this point?
There's, the answer is yes, but it's not a, it's kind of like a secondary growth type of site, it's not like wooded, it's just kind of scratchy, not nice type of stuff, so.
Scrub.
Scrub, scrubbing.
Thank you.
Is that what's showing around the border of the property? Like, is that, I mean, obviously, I have the landscaping up front, but on the sides, is that's what being maintained?
Disturbance limit?
I mean, we're going in this area, the areas here-
We're just talking more like the borders of the property.
Yeah, well, this is, this is 155 here, so like, the septic carriers are ultimately per built. And actually, this is, this is Sparrow's Nest, I don't know what to do with it, but they believe in areas here, but they start with trees a lot somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're very active with construction right now.
So that squiggly line represents the edge of the wooded areas?
That's the edge of disturbance, I don't want to call it wooded area, just disturbance.
All right, so-
That's going to change as the septic designs, actually.
Aren't we showing, are any required to show all the trees on the?
Uh, yes, that may be one of the requirements of preliminary, which we didn't go through the plans for, you know, preliminary.
Oh, because this is just sketch right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Was there a question about getting the trees on there?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in the process of doing that.
Okay.
You're bordering private properties on the back end of that, right?
Shows where the septic is.
Yeah, comment 12, by the way, or seven.
Right. I think you're going to want to consider possibly screening.
I mean, if it's needed, it's not a problem. I guess I just really would want to maybe pay a look out there and see if it's really needed, you know what I mean?
Screening from what?
The adjacent.
Screening protection for the private property, properties that are on 55, that are going to be bordering that particular, boarding the project.
Yeah, I mean, you, you can go to the ortho photos and get it pretty close, if you want to, if you want to show where the adjacent structures are, and then that might help the board. And, yeah, and the trees were comment seven, so, and you mentioned they was in the process of picking those up, so.
There's a couple, one of those is Giama, I think.
That might be by then, I'm not sure.
And a couple of some, the other.
It's got to be close to the beverage barn.
Are there any, what areas on the site? Relatively dry? All right, any other questions, guys? So we're going to consider granting sketch approval at this point?
You could, you could consider granting sketch subdivision and sketch site plan approval at this point.
Yeah, I think we're ready to do that.
And get into a higher level of design, meet the requirements of 130-20, 155-59E, and 155-6DF, so that we can move this forward, get the 239, well, actually, I'll have to see if we need to do a 239 referral for multifamily, but then get that to a public hearing at a later date.
All right, I think we're, we're, I'm going to make a motion to grant sketch approval for site plan and for, what was the other thing you said, Dan? Subdivision. I, I make a motion to grant sketch approval for site plan and subdivision. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries?
Three, zero.
All right.
So we have to do secret?
We just declared lead agency.
You just did lead agency, yeah.
So that was part of seeker?
Yep, so.
But we don't, we don't approve the seeker until after the public hearing, right, Dan?
Yeah, and you, you got to know the stormwater, the septic, all that stuff, that's all part of consideration.
Thanks, Mike. Take care, Bill. Okay, next on the agenda, Grape Hollow East.
Yeah, I, I didn't think that the applicant was going to be able to make it tonight, but they did ask for an extension. They have provided us with a few supplemental submissions, we're still looking at it, so we, we asked for-
That's the gentleman that wanted to put those apartments in, which actually would be adjacent to the call that was in red shirt at the first hearing.
Okay.
He wanted, that had to do with, he wanted to put four, four more units in or something in that, in that area between the existing.
We can talk about it.
Looking at it, I think it's all for whatever.
So we, we provided a draft resolution for a 190-day extension.
What size subdivision was that one?
This was the three-lot subdivision.
Three lot, okay. And?
Up off of Grape Hollow.
Eee.
Okay, so what's the holdup at this point? They're waiting for Health Department?
They've been going back and forth with my office, they haven't, let's see, we've had meets and bounds, descriptions, closures of that, corresponding that onto the plat, and some stormwater, that they've been going back and forth with my office on. We're still not there yet, but they're getting closer.
Yeah, that doesn't seem to be insurmountable, that's not like dealing with a Water Authority or Sewer Authority.
No, it's, it's, that's not, but, um-
Did you say they're making progress?
They're making progress, I, it could be faster, but they're making progress.
All right. And you're requesting three 90-day extensions?
Uh, one 90-day.
One 90-day, all right, any discussion?
Which would bring us through January 10th, 2024.
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
Not fine.
All right, I think we're willing to move forward. Do I have a motion to?
So move.
Uh, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Passes three, zero.
Okay, so that's Grape Hollow, the next one is Green Haven Solar. They're still not complete either.
No, and it's a complicated thing, there's decommissioning plans and stormwater easements, and so they've been doing both engineering and legal back and forth. They've been very persistent with getting us the information. I think there's been a little bit of a delay on this last part with the legal, but I think it's, I think that's also getting to a point where it's much closer, and they're trying to get it across the finish line.
So what happens if it expires then?
Technically, if it expires, then they have to ask for reapproval and-
Go back to square one, right?
Yeah, and it's, it's not necessar, like, the planning board, being that there would be no substantive changes necessarily to the plan that was previously approved, it could be a streamlined process, but, you know, we, we tend to, this is only their second 90-day extension, code permits that. I would worry about if they don't come in by the end of January to, you know, this would be-
When they come in, there's the weather issues and the other stuff, and then they have to extend again.
Hopefully, hopefully, they won't have to come back at all. Hopefully, they finish, you know, satisfy Craig and myself, and get the plan signed, and then-
Right.
Then they'll be on their way.
Besides, weather wouldn't affect this, this is more like legal discussions and not easements and decommissioning plans.
Yeah, and, you know, this is, you know, this is our first real big application of the solar field, in accordance with our local law that dealt with solar fields. There's other solar fields in the town that weren't run through the planning board process because they were on state properties and, you know, like the docks property and all that, but, so, we're just making sure that i's are dotted, t's are crossed, particularly with the decommissioning and the bonding and all that, making sure that that's all in a good place.
Yeah, I concur, it was a fairly complicated application, with a lot of agreements, so this is a genuine, I think this is a genuine issue, and it sounds like they're, they're continuing to move forward, it's not like they're lagging, it's just taking some time.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, I can concur that they have moved in good faith, so.
Okay.
So if, if the planning board wishes, they would grant 190-day extension, which would be through January 14th, 2024, for the draft resolution I provided to you.
I'll make that motion.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, passes three, zero.
I'm not going to say aye a second time, I'm telling you right now.
Aye?
I hear you, I hear you.
Okay, so the last item on the agenda is Barton Orchards Farm Market. This is also an extension?
It is.
Yes, it is, yes, asking for an extension. Right now, we are, just started our archaeological survey of the property. It's, I believe it's going to be a possible two months before that's all done, so we just started that on Wednesday, so obviously, we're asking for an extension for this property to go forward. The other reason why I appeared tonight was to briefly talk about my escrow that I have, and if anybody's been following it.
It's not-
I don't know if anybody has this, Craig, do you?
It's not a competition.
I would like it to be, though, because unfortunately, the only reason why I was able to come tonight was to pay up my escrow. So I was told today, midday, that I had to pay, to date, not only the cost, but then to put more, 2,500 more towards my project. I just want everybody to know, this project's a date, to date is $33,657 town money, not my contractors, town contractors. Most of it is because of the special counsel that was appointed to this, because it was a conflict early on with my attorney, my personal attorney at the time, that went to work with Craig Wallace's firm, but no longer works with Craig Wallace's firm. So one of the things I'm asking for tonight is to remove this idea of the special counsel, because I think most of this, 24, 25,000, is to the special counsel, which, by the way, one of the things I want to bring forward tonight is that I couldn't be here- way, one of the things I want to bring forward tonight is that I couldn't be here unless I paid up and paid $2,500 more, so you are $2,500 tonight going forward. My question is, why was I allowed to go in front of this planning board in January, February, March, April, when I was in arrears? I was, I asked the town what I owed, they didn't know at the time. I'm realizing now that the special counsel was paid in July. So I had a special counsel that was representing you against me. I did not know what it was costing me, and then all of a sudden, you pay them in July, $24-some thousand, but I can't come in front of you until I pay that. This is like strong arm, is this not? I should not have even been allowed to go in front of you back in February and March. My question is this, why?
Mr. Barton, this is an extension.
No, actually, my question would be this, how many applicants come in front of you that are allowed to come in front of you that are not paid up in escrow? Would be my first question, because my understanding is if I didn't pay today, I would not be here tonight. Of course, if I don't get $100 for my extension, my whole project will go back to square one with all this money spent for nothing. By the way, for Farm Market, from a farmer, so that's my first question. Second question would be is, please, why can't we remove special counsel going forward? Because we're so close to the end of this process. And the irony of all this is, when I look back at this whole project, where we are to date, conditional approval, right? It's almost everything that I asked for from day one. So I'm sorry, Mr. Wallace, but what I'm asking is that you take this project over and that we remove special counsel, because it's silly, it's hideous, and actually, I would actually ask that the town look into, why does special counsel not give their, did they, actually, the question would be, does special counsel give their invoices to this town?
Peter, I think we heard what you had to say. Thank you. We'll take that into consideration. We're not here to answer questions about escrow. That's not something we do as a planning.
But you do understand, this is not $2,400, this is $24,000.
And I understand you got your point.
But who are they billing the town for the energy to represent you in front of me?
Excuse me, I understand you got your point crossed. You're here for an extension.
Of course.
And that's what we're gonna discuss.
But I guess my thought would be is, legally, I was told that I could be in arrears if so asked for an extension. So why was it today that I was told that not only did I have to pay the bill, but give $2,500 more to the town to ask for an extension? So the question would be, is how many applicants stand up here in our arrears?
Peter, can you allow us to discuss this now? Can you allow us to, please, just let us discuss this?
This is processes and processes of the town, and I feel that maybe I am being penalized for the town's incompetence.
I can't have you controlling the meeting, Peter. You gotta let us discuss.
Well, you know, I even have.
If you're not gonna let us discuss or move forward, we'll just, I'm gonna just cancel, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting right now.
You can go ahead and discuss what I just said, please.
Okay. So what is the proper venue for discussing an applicant's escrow?
Not this.
It's not that.
Yes. Okay, so the question would be.
Actually, let us talk now, please, because I'm on the verge of.
But there is special counsel, and I'm not even supposed to be commenting or adding to this, so I just want that to be clear. Because this applicant actually asked that I not be, he called out the conflict early on in his application, that's necessitated the need for special counsel.
Right, right.
For your consideration tonight, you're being asked for an extension of time.
Okay.
All right.
All right, and that's what we'll discuss. Your points are well taken, and they're noted, and they're on the record, but we do want to.
So where do I go with my escrow? Who do I talk to about my escrow? Not the finance department.
You talk to the town board.
The town, I saw the supervisor today, she says this board asked up.
This.
I'm sorry.
The town board.
Mr. Wallace, I, the supervisor.
Yeah, the town board does, actually passes all the legislation with respect to the local code, the town code about consultant fees and things like that. It's right in the town code, so you can ask the town board to maybe, I don't know, change the law.
So it would be the town board that I should ask that to find out how the special counsel, what the contract is with them, why they don't bill monthly invoices?
I can't comment about special counsel or how people bill. Sorry.
But as an attorney to the town, you would oversee special counsel as far as the representation, as far as the representation to the town, right?
I don't oversee special counsel.
I don't know if I would say that was special counsel, it was conflict counsel.
Conflict.
Yeah, I think that's a better terminology.
Dan, I appreciate that, because there's no more conflict, right? There's, correct?
There's always.
David Sears is no longer doing it.
If it started as a conflict, it's conflict.
No, I'm sorry, I'm gonna ask.
You can't just, you can't ask for new.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Peter? Without the vote?
Let them vote.
Go ahead, Peter, vote the way you want to go. Go ahead.
We're gonna have a discussion.
No, go ahead, I wanna see this, though. Okay, I have all the money in this town, I'm asking for an extension. Peter, do what you want to do. Go ahead, a challenge.
So the task before the board tonight is to discuss whether we're gonna grant an extension for the approval of the Barton Orchards Farm Market, so.
Yeah, I prepared a draft resolution for you that considered two 90-day extensions, which is what, generally, the engineer for the applicant asks for a six-month extension, I'm sorry, can't speak. We do by 90-day extensions per code, and we're allowed to do up to two 90-day extensions on site plan, so I prepared a resolution for your consideration. Two 90-day extensions would bring you through May 12th of 2024.
Okay, thank you. This is the first request they've made of an extension?
Yes, it's been six months since the approval.
And so, what he mentioned to us was he's seeking to get archaeological concurrence on that there's no.
Yeah, there's a few things. So in terms of the stormwater management design with the stormwater pollution prevention plan, as part of that, when you submit your paperwork to the state, so it runs through the town as an MS4, once the MS4 says, okay, this is good, we accept it, it gets sent along with the notice of intent to start construction activity to the state. The state will be looking for certain things. One of those is always OPR, HP, or SHPO, in case there's an archaeological hit. So there was archaeological identified in the area, so they have to go through the process of having somebody go through and make sure that there's no artifacts of significance or anything like that on the site, so.
So they, but we conditioned the approval based on the stormwater permit being approved by the state? Is that correct?
It's part of my comment letter as the development of the plan and the supporting documentation for the project, so.
I'm just, I'm trying to wonder why we weren't, why we didn't start that archaeological process sooner? Why didn't we wait till after?
Yeah, I mean, I think if we went through a traditional seeker process, let's say, where this was either unlisted or type one, then it certainly would have been identified where they would get on that earlier to that extent. This was a type-two action based on the size of the building and the reuse of the existing.
Right.
So really, once you have a type-two action, generally, your seeker process is complete.
Yeah, but don't we have to approve the stormwater plan?
Yeah, so, you know, and that was a bone of contention for a little while as the project was going on, whether or not with the SWIP. So, but there is a full SWIP required. They're working towards that goal of providing all that SWIP and the supporting documentation to me. As part of that, the archaeological is being completed.
Yeah. All right. All right, I'm inclined to give him one 90-day extension. What do you guys think?
Okay, what do you have? Thoughts, Pete? You don't want to go 180?
No, I think he's got sufficient time with a 90-day, and he could come back in 90 days and explain why we don't, if he needs another 90 days.
Then, Dan? Dan? Things move forward swiftly enough that 90 days should. Be sufficient?
So you need the two, is what you're saying?
I think you need the two. I think you need the two.
You think you need?
To ultimately finish it.
So Pete, you need the, you basically need the two, right? You need the two, the two extensions.
I mean, I don't think the one's gonna fit because of what I heard yesterday from the contract. It sticks two months, but it's in place. And my engineers are gonna have to get that, and by the time we get it together, it's, I don't see 90 days. It's gonna be so tight.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of archaeological, the only thing that could happen is if.
They find.
They find something, and then they have to continue to move to the next level of archaeological study, and whether or not that would affect the location of the parking lot, or the expansion, or the stormwater management area, or a light pole, whatever it is, so, you know, but in terms of the stormwater management for the site, I reached out to the engineer today just to say, look, you know, I realize that you're looking at the archaeological now, but if you want to get me the nuts and bolts of the plans and the stormwater pollution prevention plan report, I can look at that concurrently as your archaeological is moving, so that we can keep this thing moving forward and try to get it done before the end of the extension periods. So I'm just trying to, trying to help facilitate it.
I don't see any reason to pressure the situation, let's, I'll just, if you guys are okay with it.
Grant two 90-day extensions.
All right. I'll make a motion to grant the resolution as drafted.
I'll second. Granting two 90-day extensions, right?
Yes.
Yeah, again, that's through May 12th of 2024.
Yeah, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Okay, passes three zero.
All right, I make a motion to close the planning board meeting?
I think before you do that, just for the record, I didn't think we talked about it, but the meeting minutes, we weren't able to discuss them because I don't think the appropriate people were here for the meeting minutes, so you might want to just, for the record, just say that meeting minutes will be pushed to the next meeting.
Okay.
And that was, what, July and September?
The meeting minutes, we will review the meeting minutes at the next meeting. We do not have the, all the planning board members who are present for that meeting minutes to be able to consult them. And anything else we need to discuss? Okay, all right. Motion to close the meeting?
I'll show move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting's closed.